We have everybody here. Bring this to order. You begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, the people of Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
To remind you, if you could, please silence your phones or put them on the vibrator. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as they stand. They're second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Not? We'll take a vote on it. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I gotta hand it myself. Okay. Game mail. If not, we'll move on to our county attorney, Mr. Appel.
I have nothing to present right now unless there's any specific questions that the council have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Appel? Okay. The commissioners are not here, so we'll skip them. Committee reports, we probably don't have anything. The Wage Committee, since we've been tied up in budget hearings, but I'm just gonna ask Russ, do you have? You don't have any?
No, no.
Okay. Dale?
No.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, no old business, so we'll move on to the adoption of the 2015 budget. Everybody's had a chance to review it, of course. We put a lot of hours in on this. It's not an easy task. Is there anything that we need to discuss on this?
I think there may be a clerical error or two. Let me run this by you and see if we need to correct this here or where we can do it later. Debbie and I had a few minutes to talk right before the meeting, and we cleared up one matter on page 21, having to do with the salary of Michelle Richardson. The correct number there under the 2015 column should be 14,773. Debbie has already made that correction in the system.
And that's because of these split in half equally, isn't it?
No, no, it kinda doesn't. I think the grant won't take any of the raise. But I just adjusted it, the $424 out of there, and I added it over into the commissioner's budget into unemployment. So it stays the same, and I didn't have to change the ordinance to be signed. And I could probably use a little extra money.
Also, on page 49...
So Dale, what's that take, our total down there?
It's the same. I adjusted it out one place and put it one more.
Yeah. Okay. Forty. Also, on page 49, there was a clerical error in the original request that got carried over, I think. And if I'm reading everything right, the line one, the 911 Communication Coordinator, that number should be 38,100 instead of 37,600. Because those were supposed to be $5,000 straight down the line.
But she didn't have that.
She did.
You follow me on that?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I thought...
But she didn't have it.
Yeah, she did have it.
So it's her, it's her error.
Yeah.
It's not our error.
That's correct.
Well, yeah, it was her error. We did talk about it in the meeting. It was...
She had hers, she had hers down to 4,500, not five.
Also, on, in the second line, see, the starting salary, starting salary is... would be 20,925, or is it 20,425?
She requested 25,425.
Well, I know the request was $5,000 across the board, but the numbers we've got here doesn't show that.
I mean, the way I look at it, it's kinda what the department had to make sure that their numbers are correct. We went over this with her.
Yes, that, this is part of our job too, Mike.
Which, which one are you looking at?
Page 49, Russ.
Okay.
The third item, dispatch.
The first, the first two salaries.
First two salaries are halfway around. See, we're gonna rest on the difference, 2,000, 4,000, 3,000.
We did talk to Terry when she was in here, and she did agree that that was supposed to be five across the board.
Yes, she did say that.
I just wanna make it clear, it wasn't our mistake.
If we, we...
That's correct, right.
There was a clerical error in the paperwork she gave us, for sure. So to correct that, you'd have to change the first salary to 38,100, the second salary to 26,425.
To what?
26,425. 26,425.
Which is what I have in my notes here after talking to her.
You had that in your notes? Okay, good, I'm glad. I wasn't just imagining things.
That's $1,500 more.
Yeah. And I had, maybe I had another one. On, on page 54, in courthouse operating, on the first line, we have appropriated 25,000, and that's our, our two full-time, part-time custodians. I guess the only question I have is, I know that one custodian does not want her salary changed, and the question is, does that 25,000 leave us enough room to give the second custodian a $500 raise?
Last year, they were at 23,323. So if we're bumping to 25, I would say yes.
Okay.
But, you know, now that, now that you mention that, remember I had, I told you when you were gonna take that out, that come January 1 until we were able to do an additional in February, I would have no place to pay Karen and Trudy.
Sure, I remember that.
And I think I left 3,000 over in, hold on till I can get to it here. I think I had, I had left $3,000 in the county general line, just to take care of that. So we might be, we might be short of that. So it would've been paid out of county general. So I think we'd probably, really, if we can, add $3,000 to that, to the custodian, make that 28.
Okay. I didn't wanna overlook that one. Everybody, everybody follow, on page 54, line 1, change that 25,000 figure to 28,000.
That would make that total adopted budget 573,784. 784.
573.
784.
573.
No, 573,784. It's in the courthouse operating.
Oh, yeah, okay. What's our proposed budget right now?
I think I advertised for...
What we could end up with, those changes?
About total, overall, in all budgets?
Mm-hmm. County general?
Well, county general stayed the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it was these.
Still a level.
It stayed at the 5,924.
This is the last one I had.
What was the, what were they requesting, six or something?
It was, yeah, the total, 6,662,833 was the requested.
Okay. So the last one, Dale?
That's, that was all the clerical errors that I was able to find.
So we did make...
Anyone else spotted anything? Now is time to speak up.
I didn't spot anything, but I do have a question about the 911 pay raises. I do have a question on that with the new hires.
Well, we'll have to take...
Sorry, whenever that comes in.
Get this out of gateway again.
What pages? That was line 11.
49.
And what, what are we changing?
38,100 for Terry. And then start paper dispatcher, 26,425.
On the next one?
Yeah.
First dispatcher, 26...
425.
However, that, no, maybe not. Okay.
Any discussion on those changes that we've made? Russ, did I hear you have a question?
I have a question on line 11, especially on the new hires that we have.
Okay.
When we hire the new person, I understand that we're, when they go through their training, they get a $500 raise, they get a $500 raise.
For the three trainings.
Pardon me?
For the three trainings.
And then the three training, when they get through at the final training, it's like, in six months, they get 3,500 raise, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, I have a problem with that.
Okay.
I think they are, I don't know whether Terry ever said they were on probation or not, but I'm not sure. I think, I personally think that the 3,500 should wait until this person has put in over a year or so at 911. To give somebody a brand-new, in six months, give them a 4,500 raise, I'm not willing to do that.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
Well, we've, we had a very lengthy discussion about that, Russ.
Yeah, and I slipped since then too, Dale.
Yeah, well, I know. I, um, I, I understand what you're saying, I get your point, but the, our intent is to stop the revolving door employment situation over there, training 911 operators for every surrounding county. This is the only solution we've been able to come up with, so...
I know that's our intent. That was our intent, but my problem is, they're still being paid, even with these increases, they're still being paid less than surrounding counties, and I don't necessarily think that's gonna stop the revolving door.
Well, it's a whole lot closer than what I...
Well, it's like, I said, it's closer, yeah.
And I'm not talking about the ones that put in their time. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the new hires, the new people that hasn't paid their dues yet for a year, or probation, whatever they're on.
Russ County's at 25,370.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that really affect about everybody over there? Because isn't everybody over there?
It will.
With less than a year, I mean, or...
They're a year to two years.
Probably two of them.
Two of them?
Probably. I'm talking about full-time people, the two of them. I don't know how many they got, six?
There's only six full-time slots over there, and right now, one of them is vacant. They have, there's someone in training that hasn't, hasn't reached their...
Is there three on training over there? Debbie, you have any record of that? I mean, that's probably in a payroll, but, okay. That's my, that's my, that's my opinion.
Is there any other discussion on it?
I'm willing to leave it the way we agreed during budget hearings, Russ.
That's fine.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think, I can't recall if employees over there have to go through a mandatory probationary period or not. I know they do, if they're not able to complete their, their training satisfactorily, they never advance. They never get certified.
And seeing, that's the same thing that I had with the sheriff's department with the last one they hired, you know? I don't have, I don't have a problem with them other guys getting up that paid their dues in there, I really don't. Should've got it sooner. But I do have a problem with the new hires. Again, the same thing as the guys that are basically, and I know they had to come up to start someplace, I know Billy had to start somewhere.
And I hear what you're saying, and I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, but I'm also under the impression that we're doing this to try and help stop that revolving door. And I think it's something as a council that we have to watch closely, Russ. I say we give it a, you know, give it a try, and if it ends up being what you're, what you're thinking it may be, or they end up still leaving, then we need to address it.
You can always come back to it.
We can always come back to it.
Yeah.
And just see if that works. I mean, it's a crapshoot, to be honest with you.
Well, and I think the other thing we really didn't speak to, but the fact that the opportunity to have that increase after they get, they complete the required training and the certifications, I think that you might win people to apply for the job of a, you know, of a nature that they are interested in staying, rather than, you know, somebody that's gonna try to do the job and move on. I think you're gonna get someone that, if they have the opportunity to be rewarded for their time and their, the additional studying. It's not a job you could just start in and do. They have to study the required material and pass the certifications. I think you might get a higher quality of employee applying for the job.
Debbie, does the county book say all new employees have one-year probation? Is that in the county book?
I don't think so.
Usually it's less than half, most places.
I don't either.
A lot of places it's 90 days.
It used to be 90 days.
90 days?
Yeah, but they get their, they can, if they go in full-time, then they can, they get their health insurance after they've been there 30 days.
30 days.
But I'm not, I don't, I don't have that.
Just, just to refresh everyone's memory, I've got this sheet here that we got from over there. It costs $13,711.88 to train a new employee over there. And the last seven that we've lost, we, it cost us almost $96,000 to train those seven people. They come over here, got trained, and then left and went to another county for more money. So, you know, that was 95,000, $96,000, you might as well say. We spent training employees that left, and we got nothing to show for that investment. So that's, you know, that was part of the reasoning behind doing what we did there, to try to stop that hemorrhaging that we're experiencing. Will it work? I don't know, but I don't have a better solution right now.
What's the length of time that they have to complete that?
Twelve weeks.
How many?
Twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks. Twelve-week process.
And she said she'll know before that 12 weeks whether they're gonna stick around or not, whether they're gonna keep them. So, you know, she's not gonna keep them if they're, they're not gonna, the certifications are something that's kind of, that they're required to do.
Well, it's required by law. I mean, it has, it has to be done, just like, just like sheriff's deputies have to go to the academy. We can't, we can't have sheriff's deputies that haven't been to the academy. Sheriff, how much does it cost to send, send one of your guys to the academy now?
The academy's paid for through the state, at about $4,000, but the county pays their salary, the gas, the food, during that 16 weeks of training.
Okay, so...
So you take their salary, 16 weeks of their salary, that period is, I mean, well, the rate is now, not a lot, but by comparison, it is.
Yeah.
So...
So we have an investment there, too.
Sure we do, sure we do. Plus the time and training that we put into our, to the deputies, so...
Is their salary based on what they're, what they will be making or what they are presently making?
Based on what they're, whatever they started out with, whatever it is, the years that they did, stayed the same while they're at the academy. Plus their healthcare, plus their health benefits, resources.
Is there any more discussion on it? If not, leave it in there. Any more discussion on the budget?
Uh, yes, I got one thing that still bothers me a little bit. I'd like to take it out this year, and I'd like to take out the $30,000 for the sheriff's car this year, to take it down to zero, is my view.
And your reasoning?
My reasoning is, I just, one, we obviously can't control how the cars are used, that's up to the sheriff, but I still have a lot of complaints from people saying, why do they take those cars home?
The sheriff has already said that they're not gonna be taken.
And they have to complain with their kids and their wives being in those cars.
The sheriff has already said that that will change with this adopted budget, that that policy will change.
Well, I mean, I like to be like the city police, you take the car home, you park it, and you come back on the next day or...
Sheriff, did you wanna address that?
I, I won't be the sheriff next year, I can't address that. So, but I can address the out-of-county use.
Yeah, use.
Will be stopped. But, and I guess that's really not for me to say, but I would think any policy we would put in place for that, at this point, would, the sheriff would, you know, not change from that, but I, I'm not gonna be the sheriff next year, so I can't...
So you have it in place right now?
No, I do not have it in place right now, because their salaries are the exact same as we've been making for the last 20 years.
So you're gonna leave that until a salary, until...
January 1st.
I would want to cut something.
January 1st. Is what you have policy change?
Technically and legally, I think the county commissioners could take that burden off your shoulders.
Yes, yes, they can. They're, they're, they're ours, really, I mean, they're just assigned to us.
Right.
So...
The commissioners could, could do that, stroke the pan.
So it wouldn't change from sheriff to sheriff, from term to term?
Right.
But it's something that's been discussed, and I think is, most people are on the same page. Counselor Flon, Navi?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the budget.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget, we have a second.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second, we'll do roll call vote, but there's no further discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilman Winter?
Yes.
Councilman Strong?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Seidel?
No.
Councilwoman Wise?
Yes.
Councilman Blum?
No.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Motion carries, four, or five to two. Now, get on the congratulatory talk. First, I wanna thank all the department heads for putting this budget together, giving up with their time to meet with us, some of you multiple times, we appreciate it, we know that your time is important to both your families. There are some raises in here, though for the county employees, they don't amount to a lot, we know that, we realize that, we're aware of that. There is a plan in effect that we have. Unfortunately, we're not able to share all the specific details with you, hopefully we will in the next few months. I'm confident that things will change for the county here in the near future, that will help brighten things up for us. The county employees do need to be paid fairly. This didn't happen overnight, it's not gonna change overnight. It's gotta be a step process that we, that we do this. And we don't think any less of the county employees, we respect you, we appreciate you, this county government could not work without you, we are aware of that. We're aware of our road deputies that put their lives in harm's way each and every day. I've heard comments that, well, there's not much going on here. Well, I don't wanna meet one of these guys' wives or kids in a store and have to explain to them why daddy took a bullet for, you know, $26,000. To me, that's not worth it. But I respect them and I applaud them for the service that they do. I applaud everybody here in the county government. I applaud the commissioners for working with us for the added budget. Without them, we'd be looking at some serious shortfalls in our income. We're, we came in with this budget at, what was it? 6.6 million is what was requested, we had to get it down to 5.9 million without doing, without having to lay anybody off. We don't wanna do that, it's the last thing we wanna do is lay anybody off. We're aware of that there's shortages in some offices, you know, well, maybe in the near future, we can rectify that. I also wanna thank the council for their hard work, for being here and putting in many hours and trying to get this budget done. I think it went fairly smoothly. And last but not least, I wanna thank our auditor Debbie Kit for the many hours that she's put in behind the scenes in changing numbers, making copies, and doing all the hard work that she does. I appreciate her work, and I thank her for that. Does anybody else have any other comments?
I got one thing to say. Our courthouse employees are between $4,000 and $7,000, getting less than other counties our size. So we gotta see some way to make sure in the future that they get some big raises. I hate to say that, but I went through the Indiana Farm Bureau book, and right there, it'll tell you that they're unpaid. And a lot of people will say, well, they know what they're gonna get when they go in, but a lot of these people get these jobs, need a job, will take anything, but they should get a fair wage. That, I'll shut up.
Dale? That's unbelievable.
I did enough talking during budget hearings.
Somebody deduct you, or what?
No. No, we got people here waiting on us for other business, so I'm, I'm ready to move on.
All right. Transfers, extension office? Do you hear those, is that package, somebody here could be here?
No, um, I didn't, I wa- I didn't think that Cindy was gonna be able to be here. But, uh, she just want, she had money left over from the, um, summer assistant, and she wanted to move that into transportation. Yeah, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve this transfer of the amount of two hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents for the transfer to the extension office?
I move that we transfer the two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second, any discussion? There's no further discussion? Move to adopt, uh, accept this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Approved. Okay. Additional appropriations. Uh, circuit court jurors' meals and circuit court indigent transcripts, if I said that right?
Yes. Would you like for me to address that again?
Yes, yes, you are.
Thank you. I talked about this last month, I think, and, uh, basically, I just did not request enough the first time to get us through the end of the year. And, uh, we have five more trials coming up. Starting Monday, we have one, and we'll have one a month through the end of the year, plus we have another civil trial, so, I estimate as closely as I can what we'll need for meals and transcripts of depositions, which you have to do to prepare for trial. Uh, the trial that we were having the week I was down here in August has about thirteen hundred dollars worth of deposition transcriptions that we need to pay for in the trial that we're gonna have Monday. There will be some depositions associated with that, so that's, that's why I'm asking for the extra money. I just didn't put enough in the first time to get me through to the end.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to the additional appropriations in the amount of five hundred, fifteen hundred dollars for the jurors' meals. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. I'm gonna do the second one then.
I'll make a motion on the second one.
Okay.
Gotta be done.
Yep, got a motion to approve the fifteen hundred for the circuit court for indigent transcripts?
That's good, I can handle this.
This was, this was seconded. It was seconded, any further discussion?
One, Judge, could you, could you mind, uh, describing me, to me, what a indigent transcript is?
Well, that's just a transcription of a deposition. When you prepare for a trial, if you are a competent attorney, you will take a deposition of the witnesses before the trial. And then you have to have those depositions transcribed, so you have them at your fingertips during the trial. So when you're cross-examining those witnesses, you can impeach them with their deposition, or just effectively cross-examine them and do your job. So those indigent transcripts, that means a deposition that was taken under oath of a witness is being transcribed, so that you can use it at trial.
So that, so the name doesn't necessarily mean that this pertains only to indigent individuals?
Yes, it does, because people who don't have appointed lawyers pay for their own depositions to be transcribed. They pay for their lawyers, they pay for their depositions. Those are trial costs that indigent people can afford. So yes, it does mean indigent.
So these are, uh, these are close to linked to, to the pauper attorney. Pauper attorneys and the indigent, uh, transcripts kind of go hand in hand, is it? Right?
They do. Most of the trials, um, have indigent lawyers, not all of them, but most of them do.
Okay. I'll not question the need for this.
Chris, is the judge telling the truth? I'll put you on the spot.
I didn't see it.
I would just say yes.
Yes.
I would even, I would even expect to say yes.
Good answer, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome, Judge.
I have no further questions.
Okay, we have a motion, we have it seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Treasurer, part-time.
I, I hope I put enough explanation on the additional, I don't know if you guys received a copy of it or not. I just would like to finish out the rest of the year with the girl I have working part-time and to cover. I added a little bit extra there to cover a couple of weeks during tax season so that we could have one extra part-time in there to answer phones. It seemed to be an issue in the spring of not getting the phones answered, and with just three of us in there and three lines coming in, it's hard to, to get those phones answered when you have people standing in line and waiting that's coming in. So I would kind of like to have a little bit extra in there to, and then finish out the part-time, that's twenty hours a week at the end of the year. It's been, it's been, it's worked out really good for us to have our, our time in there. And I've got with Debbie a little earlier to see about working on some of the exemptions we've had a period of time. And Debbie wasn't quite ready to get those laid out for us, uh, so we could look those things up. But, uh, that's one of the things we're gonna start doing, is start helping get, that's another source of income for the county, is get those.
I figure it's probably about a hundred and eighty thousand roughly? Hope, Mark? Oh wait, Dale's going through his binder, so I know he's up to something.
Well, I just, uh, okay, um. Okay, Mary, we, we originally appropriated fifteen hundred dollars for you for overtime, or for part-time help to get you through two busy seasons. Then later on this year, we gave you another three thousand, and you've used all that up.
That, I, and I did talk, talk to you about that, by giving that part-time girl twenty hours a week, so we could get a more steady situation in the, in the treasurer's office. And that's the reason we've used it up. I asked for more than that, but you cut it down to that. If I'd had the full amount, I would have carried me through the end of the year.
What did you ask for? If you remember.
I, um, I think it was.
Seventy-two or something.
I think it was about seventy-two hundred.
That was in addition to the?
The fifteen hundred.
The first fifteen hundred? And then you came back, we gave you another three thousand? And you thought the seventy-two hundred would carry you through?
It would have carried me through the end of the year. I had that figured out.
With all the requests, that gives us the eighty-two hundred, that's a thousand more.
Well, I added a little bit on there for an extra part-time to help cover, answer new phones, because during the tax season this spring, there, one of the commissioners came in complaining we weren't getting to the phones as much as we should. And with, with three people in there and three lines of people coming at you, it's hard to answer a phone when, when that's there.
Wasn't the commissioner's having a budget for part-time? Remember? Wasn't that what that was supposed to be for, police types of things?
Uh, no, their part-time is in case they need it for the jail cooks.
Because I thought that's what they wanted to do, was have a Florida person.
I got no problem, uh, finding part-time help for you during your two busy times of the year.
But see, we don't have just two busy times of the year. Right now, we're working with demand notices, we have to check those every day. Those are coming in, and we're working with the tax sale every day now. And so it's not just two tax seasons that we have anymore. That's not what just the treasurer does. I mean, yes, it's a busy time during that time, but it's just as busy. Right now, with these tax sales, people, the people coming in with the tax sale stuff, it's, it keeps you very busy. Because you have to look up all of that and make sure that everything's posted exactly the way it should be posted, or it comes back up for tax sale when it shouldn't. So there, there's a lot more than just those two busy times. I mean, we, we have to do, send out demands, and, and we have to check those every day. We have to che- check them when they come off of it, and we have to keep in touch with, all that, and the tax sales the same way.
Well, I guess my point is, we keep adding, adding to this and adding to this, we'll write back to three, three full-time people in, in treasurer's office all the time.
No, we're still, we're not, we're a long way from being three full-time people in there. Twenty hours a week doesn't make a full-time person.
Is there any other discussion on this?
We really, we really need the extra help in there to get, keep things caught up and done.
Have you got any money for the November collections whatsoever?
We're starting to collect November taxes now.
And you only got five hundred thirteen dollars left?
I don't have anything left, no.
And she's got this, uh.
I have nothing left in here.
As of eight thirty-one, she had a hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents left out of a total of forty-five hundred dollars for part-time we've, we've given the treasurer so far this year.
And I have another petty in there. I got another week's part-time coming out, and that'll take a minute.
Any further discussion?
It's just, it's just like the other day when the lady came in and we had to call the, the sheriff's department. There was only two people in the office then. If, if Sarah had been there by herself, because I, I was not there, I was sick, and if Sarah had been there by herself, I don't know what would have happened, but at least she had somebody else there to push that button, because if you're there by yourself, sometimes don't, things don't work out right.
You need thirty-seven hundred to finish out the year, is that what you're saying, Mary?
Yeah, yes.
You want, you, you're gonna need him to finish out the year as a part-timer, Mary?
That, that would give me the twenty-hour persons each week, plus I would give a little extra help to help cover the phones and during the tax season.
So you're asking for twenty hours a week for this help? Mary, I know you, uh, you don't feel like you're asking for much. And in the whole scheme of things, thirty-seven hundred dollars is, is not much money. We got a whole string of, of, uh, additional appropriations just tonight that total up to thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. None of these people think they're asking for much, but when you total them up, you get, we're, we're kind of, kind of close to maybe breaking even in county general this year, but we can't do it like this. I, I just.
I'm just, I'm, I'm simply asking for enough to get through to the end of the year. Give, give my regular part-time person in there and keep things going as they are. It's been better, the phones are being answered and taking care of, and I just want to keep that going. And, I mean, she does not take any insurance or anything like that, that's nothing, it's just simply part-time costs.
I'll make the motion that we appropriate the thirty-seven hundred.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to appropriate the thirty-seven hundred dollars, we've seconded it, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Do a roll call. I don't know, do a roll call.
Councilman Winter?
Yes.
Councilman Strong?
No.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Seidel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wise?
No.
Councilman Blum?
No.
Councilman Navi?
No.
What more can I do, people? I have tried and tried. I have tried and tried, what more can I do?
You got the appropriation?
No, I didn't, they had more nos.
No, you didn't.
Four nos.
You didn't have four to three?
Four to three.
Four nos.
Did I have four?
Four nos? You had four nos?
Four nos.
Oh, you, okay.
Four to three, no.
Yeah, that's four nos. Sorry, I was gonna say you said yes.
I mean, I, I have tried and tried. Other people come in here and ask for, um, additional, so they seem to have, not have a problem getting them. I just want help in my office, I want to be able to handle this office correctly, and. I, I had a, a gentleman the other day, it's, I, it takes me away when I have to do certain, some things, it takes me away from that office. And I can't help that, I can't foresee that. I had a gentleman the other day, over an hour on the phone with him. And I can't leave my desk to go work up front or anything else, or help with the other stuff, when this is going on. And then if there's that extra part-time person in there, then I can, it frees things up so we can get the job done.
I think, I bet it would help the council if you would come up with a more restrictive, uh, schedule for your part-time help, and.
I, it's.
To have, to have full-time, part-time is practically the same.
But we're talking about a job that has to be done a certain way. I can't just have anybody come in off the street and work that job. They have to know how to use that computer system, they have to keep in, in tune with that stuff that's, that changes in there and the new stuff that comes in all the time. And now changes on a, almost on a weekly basis, we learn stuff that they've added in here. I can't just have anybody come in and work part-time. I need a person that's dedicated and will come in on a regular basis for me. And if I don't get any money, there's not gonna be a part-time person there during tax season. And if there's not, there's two lines at tax season. One line part of the time, because my employee gets an hour lunch. So every day, for an hour, there'll only be one line. Now, I, I in good faith came back to you because you didn't give me the full amount I needed to begin with, and I asked for it. And you, you said, you agreed that, to do the twenty hours for somebody, so I can keep a steady employed part-time person. I don't know what else I can do, I've done what you requested of me.
Are you saying that I?
All of you, I mean, as a, as a council, that, I've done what you requested. So.
We have been in there, and, I, I don't. We have been in there, and, I, I don't...
It's a micro...
It's been busy when I was in there. It's been busy when I was in there, I, I... She's gonna keep coming back and asking for money. And I don't say that in a mean way, I mean, I...
It's either that or give my full-time, full-time employee back next year, so we can have...
What are the hours if this part-time person comes in?
She works twenty hours a week.
All right, but is there like, from ten to two?
She usually comes in, she usually, during our busy times, Monday or Friday are usually our busiest time, and so she'll usually come in on Monday or Friday, and Wednesday, because Wednesday's usually a busy time. So, we try to schedule her to the busy days, and then she's off, like she doesn't come in on Thursday usually, because Thursday's usually a slower day.
Does anybody else want to discuss this?
I said we move on, we've already phoned it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mary. I'm gonna jump to the coroner, Vicki. You know, the sheriff's got a bunch of stuff.
I'm requesting funds, um, for additional autopsies this year, and for additional transportation, which is transportation costs to take the decedents to the autopsies. Those, as I've noted, the transportation costs will parallel how many autopsies are done, if an autopsy's done, then there's been a transport cost. I started out this year owing for two autopsies from last year, I think I brought that up in the budget hearing, so right away I was down from seven thousand dollars to five thousand dollars immediately, as soon as I could pay those bills. Then, in January, two more autopsies right away, which brought me down two more thousand dollars, um, at that time. Presently, I have zero funds for autopsies. I have three outstanding autopsies to be paid for, um, as well as additional transportation costs, I do have eighty-five dollars left in that fund. I have transferred as much on same-line items as I can to keep from having to come, um, but I've exhausted all those possibilities as well. So, that's why I'm asking for the funds for autopsies and transportation costs at this time.
Is this for all of the autopsies that's already been done for this?
No, three autopsies that have already been done. I'm allotted seven thousand dollars per year. Two thousand dollars of that was for autopsies that I had to pay from the end of last year, which brought me down to five thousand dollars beginning balance this year. Then I had another two, which brought me down to four. Four thousand dollars. So I have three autopsies that have just recently been done, that need to be paid for.
Say you got three, it's gotta be paid for?
Mm-hmm, right now.
It's gotta be paid.
I had two on one day, I had two back-to-backs at Fayette Regional that had to go for autopsy that day.
It's gotta be paid, I'll make the motion pay it.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion to second to approve the amount of four thousand dollars to be transferred for pathology?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries.
And for the transportation costs, that parallel that?
Yep, we're doing it right now. Talk about that. Go ahead.
I have a present balance of eighty-five dollars left for transportation costs for the decedents. To have autopsies, I'm requesting eight hundred dollars to make a balance of eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. I hope this will carry me for the rest of the year on both of those, I hope, but I can't guarantee it.
Who charges that amount? Who do we pay for transportation?
We pay either Miller-Moster-Robins, or Urban Linkler for transportation.
Okay, they charge two hundred dollars?
One ninety-five to two hundred.
Okay.
And as I discussed in the budget hearing, autopsies are going up, I'm still checking, but we're up to, um, at least twelve fifty, depending on facility fee, it could be fifteen fifty. Transporting right now, I'm transporting to Marion County, which is maybe a little bit further, a little more costly than Muncie, where I was taking the decedents, but I'm also checking another couple of places, so...
It's gotta be paid, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to approve the amount of eight hundred dollars for transportation. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
You have a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Kathy?
Mine is on the, we already got the printer in, because I was here last month, and we said it was okay to go ahead and order it, because this, the printer comes out of the sales disclosure fund, which we may use for hardware and software needed in the, for the assessor's office. I had requested ninety, twenty-nine hundred, because I hadn't gotten the bill yet, but the bill came in, and it was two thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. And it worked really well, we printed our maps already, so they're starting the reassessment. I think Bill McDaniel's using it, and I know more setups, he's...
This is a technical rubber stamp? Anything, is it pretty much...
Yes, because the code says that it's just moving the money out of the sales disclosure fund into a line item, so the claim may be written for it. And it's not out of county general's, it's, it's that sales disclosure fund.
Okay, I got a question, Kathy, now, this twenty-nine hundred dollars is for three years, includes delivery, setup, maintenance, ink, paper, print heads?
Everything.
And then you pay so much per copy?
Yes.
Okay.
It's so much of...
Forty, one to forty cents is worth for the...
Forty cents is worth for it?
Black and white?
Color.
Color.
That was colored, forty cents was colored.
It's worked real well, and includes the maintenance and the ink, when we need the ink, and anything repaired on it, the print heads, so...
So four hundred and fifty bucks a piece?
It's everything for three years.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Mark, can I have you make a motion to accept this, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
You have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries.
Thank you.
What's this prosecutor's hearing?
Well, that's just that, that one by Wall, they, they received that money, and, and then they appropriated into the bad check fund.
Okay, we'll just take care of that recording. Let's do the county general prosecutor bad check fund. The amount requested is a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion, it's not tax-doning, it's my paying for bad checks.
We have a motion to a second. A second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries. Now we can get down to the sheriff. County General, Jail Institutional Supplies.
Gonna make sure I got the right ones, I've got several, so... We're under the fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. That's to finish up paying Brockmans, the Bob Barker people, um, it covers all our paper products kind of stuff, cleaning supplies, laundry detergent, the toilet paper, the paper towel, the window cleaner, the germ killer, that's what that covers to finish up the year. You want to cover these all at once, or you want to go one by one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You go to the next one, it says contractual services, I'm requesting a thousand dollars from the Cume Building for jail, um, lets us pay up our pest control for the next five months, our hoarsening inspection, which is our fire controls, um, and that's two more things that we have pending from hoarsening also, for them to come down to check our fire alarms and our water, our fire suppression system. Um, I'm in this, yeah, next one is... We have, there's another one from Cume Jail for fifteen thousand to repair the jail, we have invoices pending of about thirteen thou, thirteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars, this should finish up the year. The one that says Garage and Motors, the five thousand dollars, that is to finish out the year for vehicle services and any maintenance that we incur between now and then, at the end of the year. We have presently six hundred and eighty dollars in that account, forty-seven cents, so that should finish us up for the rest of the year. I have a transfer to pay overtime for the road officers.
Really? I got back one question.
Yeah.
Of all your vehicles, how many are still in a warranty?
Three.
Three. Three.
Three.
That all the trucks probably?
That's probably the truck, those are the newest ones.
Yeah.
The, the one during, it may have, still have some, it probably has the hundred thousand powertrain and motor, but, but I think that the rest of them are all oh-five, oh-seven, oh-eights. Um, I have an overtime, we have a transfer to approve for overtime for ten thousand dollars, that's to hopefully finish up the year, with us being a man down, we're having to cover those spots. You have, you don't have that one?
Yeah, I don't have that one.
That's gonna be from Deputy Six, line item Deputy Six, that was submitted on July the sixteenth.
Well, if it was from a one to a one, we'd probably just went ahead and transferred.
I'll bet it's done, then, it is from a one to a one?
Yeah.
Okay. You probably disregard that one. The other additional is out of the misdemeanor fund. I talked to you guys last month for the repairs of the padded cell of eleven thousand, seven hundred, um, we want to get ten thousand out of there for gas to pay for all the transports, which we have three tomorrow, we're going to Rockville. And we also want to purchase the transport vehicle out of there to help take the burden off the one that I have. That misdemeanor fund is sitting there, that's non-taxpayer money, um, we used it for various projects, um, we have offset our budget, and the county general budget quite a bit by using those funds, but those are the totals we need to pull out of there, it's about thirty-two thousand dollars, there's about sixty-five thousand dollars in there, so that leaves us, you know, thirty-three thousand, in case something else comes up, and doesn't drain that account, and we don't like to pull that down, a long way down, just in case we need that for a repair when we don't know about it.
You're taking approximately half of that out.
Yeah. Again, we talked about the padded cell, that's to repair it, eleven thousand, seven hundred, and it was gonna be thirty-three thousand, I think it was, to fix it.
Maybe in one...
To redo the entire thing, I don't think that's necessary for that kind of money versus the eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars to repair it. Those are, I believe, all that I have, which is a lot, so, you know, I also have some one-forty-fours.
We'll do these first.
Okay.
You were in here last month, and...
It's twenty dollars.
Now, he's giving us a warning ticket.
Well, he didn't get advertised.
Yeah, I explained, I noticed this.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory.
You're right.
One of these projects to repair the capstones on the...
No.
Okay.
No, that's, that's a, anything that's... This really should be a commissioner project too, the padded cell, but I'm not, I usually don't take the time to get them too involved at this part, because we're there every day, we see what the problem is, and it's been like this for quite a while, to the point where we can no longer ignore it, it has to be fixed. So we went ahead and then the commissioners approved everything I've brought to you guys, they're aware of it, so... The capstones are on top of the jail, I believe, around the outside hill.
Yeah.
Please and all and such.
Yeah.
Oh, but they did come and have, they're going to cover those with aluminum, I think, and save some money in replacing all the parts.
Right.
Any discussion?
I'll move to approve all the sheriff's appropriations, unless anybody wants to invest in that.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. I'll go through, and we have a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollars for institutional supplies, the five thousand dollars for the garage and motors. Fifteen thousand for repairs to jail, one thousand for contractual services, and thirty-two thousand for misdemeanor fund. All, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries. Okay, one-forty-fours.
I have two one-forty-fours, John Schopmer, I told you guys about this back at Budjohn, he has officially retired, his last day was the twenty-eighth, thirty years and four months, he served in the jail, so he was released time served, so to speak. We have to get him replaced, and then we had a jailer call in and quit, last, it's been two weekends ago now, um, he was called to come to work, didn't want to come to work, it's sort of not what we do over there, you have to come to work, so he decided to quit, so that's exactly what he did. He would not come in and sign a resignation, but the chief deputy talked to him, and he was just not, he was not coming to work. So, we want to get those guys replaced, um, I was gonna make some calls to you guys earlier, but we've been making do for about the last six days or so, since that's all happened, we've completed interviews of six people, we have two prospects that I think are sufficient to fill our needs, hopefully, until we get them hired, we don't know how they're gonna react in that environment, um, but we're just waiting to get the one-forty-fours approved, the commissioners were giving packets this morning, they approved the people that we had picked, chosen, and just need to come over here to get council approval, and get those guys hired so they can turn in, they still have to turn in their two weeks' notice to their jobs, that they currently have. So they are currently employed and want to come to work at the sheriff's department to better themselves, so, sort of proud of that.
What kind of training period do they go through?
They get at least one solid week with one-on-one with the computer, our computer system, I don't want to say it's really advanced, but it, everything goes in the computer in our program that we have, it's called Spillman, they get one week, and about three days of that is all computer work, entering names, all of their information, because you would be surprised if we get a lot of John Smiths that come in, and next thing you know, we have ten in our computer, and when you pull one up, you have the wrong one, so we make sure that they're, they do a very good job on inputting information, all of our jail round, everything goes into that computer system. They get the one-on-one training for a week, and then they get put on the assignment to the shift that they're gonna be working, and I think that shift's gonna be seconds or thirds, if I had to guess. And then from that point on, our corporals watch them, work with them, they're really never alone, um, for that first couple of months, until we see how they're progressing. Some catch on faster than others, some need a little remedial, and then they move on, but that's sort of how the program goes. They have to attend one week of training at the law enforcement academy, jail officer training, they have to pass that, um, we've never had anybody not pass it, if we do, they're not gonna come back to work for us for that, so, uh, but that is pretty much the state requirements for that, and then they have to have their twenty-three hours of a year training, mandatory training for all the officers that work there in the jail, so that covers SIDS, bloodborne pathogens, uh, I mean, it covers a whole length of stuff that they deal with, jail suicides, so that's pretty much the training.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to accept the one-forty-fours, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes out, motion carries.
You guys have any other questions, anything? Okay, thank you.
Do we have any patron concerns? Okay? You have a motion to adjourn, do you have a second?
Hold on a second. I did not get what it was you needed to have changed in the nine-one-one, it isn't gonna affect us...
It isn't going to affect this overall 47, 473, 100.
No, I have to pay $1,500.
If you're, if you're going to do that, this is the thing you sign, and I have to print this out of the gateway system. So you'll have to give me a minute to go in and make... Yeah, you have to recess for a minute.
Motion to recess. We'll recess for, how much time you need?
Give me 10 minutes.
10 minutes to recess so she can reprint this so we can sign.
All right.
Let's get this thing going so we can get out of here.
Page 21, the first one that was changed.
I, I'm not going by the numbers. I'm so sorry.
I was the director.
I, I changed the, the county general stayed the same. I changed, oh crap, did it pick up that Cume cap? Well, this one doesn't have a signature on it. No, that, no, it would. It would go over here. What, do you have, do you have this copy in your, with your stuff? You have one?
I did make copies for you. I didn't, I did.
Yeah.
These are, okay. Hold on, just bear with me. I'm sorry. It turned me off with that one, with the 911 thing. Courthouse operating fund. I still had 570, 784, and that probably needs to be changed.
So you need to go print another one?
Probably. I'm so sorry.
Okay, we'll take another recess. So we got one other item of business here, gentlemen?
Pardon?
Counsel?
Sign a papers?
No. Was to read this whole thing or what?
Yeah, yeah. He could explain.
Okay, Chris will explain this. First Amendment to Fayette County Police Retirement Plan.
It's basically an amendment to the police retirement plan. It's been approved by the merit board and the sheriff. It's basically admitting it so they are in accordance with the IRS to remain a qualified plan. It just needs the county's approval.
There's really no discussion on this, right?
I mean, there's not really...
It's just a language thing.
Yeah. They had to swish up one paragraph, so it was, remains a qualified plan, about what counts as compensation pay after severance. The merit board already approved it and started the sheriff. You were there. Can you speak to it?
Yeah, just, we didn't know anything much more than what you're saying. It's just McCrady Keen sent it and said that we needed to do that so that we were all kosher with the IRS, basically.
Your motion?
I'll move to approve the agreement between county and McCrady Keen.
Second?
I'll second.
So you have a motion to approve the agreement between, between the county and McCrady Keen. All those in favor, if there's not further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes out. Motion carries.
We also need to sign on the back of these 144s also.
Okay. Now we can adjourn.
Yeah.
We can adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Mark, you had the original motion to adjourn second? No, I did. Second?
Second.
You have a motion to adjourn. You have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes out. Motion carries.